Are we on camera?
Yes, and we are on camera.
Good evening, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. First up, we'll have the roll call, and Brandon.
Okay. I'll start it off with Board Member Mason Iona. I do not see him online. Board Member Adrian Dillard. I do not see her online. Board Member Jill Easley Allen. Absent. Board Member Ray G.
Yes.
Present.
Present, thank you. Board Member Catherine Greby, I see her as well. Well, I'll just.
All right, Kathy, we're gonna mark you as here.
Board Member Audrey Hidano, I know is here.
That's me, I'm here.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Board Member Puni Kama. Absent. Board Member Megan Kenny.
Here.
Here, thank you. Board Member Paula Kurishige.
Here.
Here, thank you, Paula. Board Member Michael Lum, I also see online.
Hello.
Thank you, Michael. Board Member Chair Patrick Smith.
Here.
Board Member Philip Soon. Absent. And Board Member Sylvia Young. Okay, well, absent, one, two, just one short of four.
Okay, well, hopefully, we're good, someone coming in. Next, our first honor agenda, the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Fire Department online?
I'm not seeing them.
Not seeing them, we will move on. If they do join, let me know. We'll move on to the Honolulu Police Department. First up, we have District One.
Yes, we have several representatives.
So.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry. My name is Sergeant Brian Sekia from District One. I'm sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, this is, I apologize, this is my first time doing a neighborhood board meeting, so please bear with me. But I work in for District One in the area of Punch Bowl. I worked the night shift over there at Sector Two in District One, so. I'll read the stats for you guys right now. This is for the month of May. So motor vehicle thefts. We had six motor vehicle thefts. In the previous month, we had three. We had two burglaries. Previously, we had seven. Theft cases, we had eight. Previously, four the month prior. Car break-ins, we had four. And the previous month, we had three. Assault-type cases, we had two. Previously, we had one. We had no sex assault cases, no graffiti cases, as well as the months prior, zeros for both of those type of incidences, and we had one drug-type case. Previously, we had. So the total calls for service for the month of May was 666 calls. And previously, the month prior, 575 calls, so we had an uptick in calls last month. We just wanna let the public know, or the board members know, that this Friday, we have Coffee with a Cup at the Keo Mooku McDonald's. That would be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So if anybody has more questions and they wanna kind of talk to, you know, get, have a conversation, get in depth of any questions you guys have, that would be a good opportunity to sit face-to-face with officers, usually high-ranking officers as well, yeah. And, you know, we're in the middle of summer break. We just wanna remind everyone that, you know, the kids are out of school, they're on summer break, and we usually see an uptick in calls during the summer. And we just wanna remind the public to be vigilant. You know, lock all your doors, try not to store valuables in vehicles. We tend to see uptick in car break-ins. And the parks and, you know, the shopping centers, they're kind of more populated with, you know, more people and teenagers and stuff, and a little bit teenagers can be mischievous during the summer month, so. Just wanna remind the public to be vigilant about that. That's pretty much all I have right now. Is there any questions for me?
Yeah, are there any questions from the board for the sergeant? Paula, please go ahead.
Nice to meet you, officer. My name is Paula Kurishige. I live in New Uwana, but I do have visitors that go to Punch Bowl. There has been several times it's either it's a white Toyota or a white Mercedes of a man who's stealing flowers and including the park at New Uwana Valley Park. So if you see him along the road by Punch Bowl, Puahwina, his alphabets for his license are Y A B two four six. And if he's using it as a rental, usually you'll see the back end of the truck, the Toyota or the whatever, with stolen, this time stolen bananas. So if you're up there at Puahwina, he's making the money by even stealing the flowers from the Uwana Valley Park. Just to make you aware of it, so when you see him on the side of the road, you might wanna question him. Dark complexion, usually has all black on. Including black sport shoes. Black shirt, black pants, black sport shoe. And I know I'm from here because that's where they're stealing the flowers. So it's getting transported over there to sell for Puahwina. The Hill of Sacrifice.
Thank you, Paula.
No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any are there any other questions from the board for the officer? Any questions from the community? Sergeant Sekia, I hope I said that name correctly, sir. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and you did a great job, and we appreciate your service and and talking to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have District Five of the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sergeant Tablet. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay. Hi, good evening. Much like Sergeant Sekia, this is my first neighborhood board meeting. I hope everyone's doing fine. I'd like to go ahead and read the stats, please, for the Liliha, New Uwana area of District Five. So aggravated assaults for the month of May, we did have one up from April, which had zero. Auto thefts for the month of May, we had three. In April, we had three. For burglaries, for the month of May, we had two. April, we had zero. Also robberies, we had one robbery for the month of May and zero for April. Sex assaults did go up, we had three for the month of May, as opposed to zero for the month of April. Regular assaults, we had three. April was one. Thefts, we had nine, as opposed to April, we had six. And unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, we did have a decrease for the month of May. We went from, we had three, as opposed to April, there was nine. There was an increase of calls for services for the month of May. We had 843 calls for service. April was 817. And that's all, that's the statistics that I have. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you.
Hang on, yeah. Sorry, also also wanted to just let you guys. I was Lieutenant Yamashita here from District Five also. We have a Coffee with a Cup also coming up in June 27th, which is Friday. So Coffee with a Cup, June 27th, Friday, it's gonna be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And it's located at 414 North School Street. 414 North School Street. So if you guys have time, please come out. Give it an opportunity to build some relationships and talk story with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Where is that, where is 414? Yeah, I was kind of thinking it might be the McDonald's, so that's, everybody will probably know it by that, you know, know the McDonald's. Thank you.
414 North School Street is at the intersection of School and Liliha.
Yeah, that's the McDonald's. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Are there any questions for District Five from the board? Paula, please go ahead.
Without me having to give another chair, without me having to say it over again, you probably heard what I said to the other officer about Puahwina and the truck and the possible rental. The other part of it is that you have to know that I have requested that you take more involved with the park, the Uwana Valley Park, because of calls I'm getting regarding all different things going on, like the man cutting the flowers, but also dumping chickens. And also excessive amounts of cats now. And then, now drug exchanges. As a volunteer previously, I did talk to somebody, Officer Miura. And she said that you possibly would be able to do better, not better, but more extensive things at midnight to check the park for some of this stuff that's going on.
Yes, ma'am.
Paula, a quick question. What time of the day have this incident been occurring at, at New Uwana Valley District Park? The flower picking, the chickens, the excessive cats? What time would you say would be, daytime around what time?
Oh, it's anywhere, anywhere. But the man cutting is usually during the morning hours.
Can I have an approximate time, please?
Oh, between 8:00 and 12:00.
Eight o'clock to 12 o'clock?
Right.
Okay. And I got the license plate for one he gave also as a Y A B two four six, right?
Two four six, yes. And he may be, he may be renting what he's using, because it's always white. White.
Okay.
Whatever.
We'll send the message out to the officers who have more checks during the day for that.
Yeah, at nighttime, then Officer Miura said they would increase the looking at the park at midnight because we're trying to decide later on in this meeting on who's gonna do what at the park, because as volunteer, I retired.
Yes.
And I can't go down there anymore, I'm too old. So you gotta be, you gotta be too young to go there, so.
Yeah, we also encourage the community to call if you guys see any concerning incidents occurring at the park, so if you guys see something at the park going on that needs to be addressed, by all means, don't hesitate to call 911, yeah? We'll have an officer come out. We will we will also increase the patrolling efforts in the area.
Now, I notified Queen Emma about this meeting tonight. But they're supposed to have their own security now, because the man that was doing security there has been let go. So the man in the back house, they're now using it for hula. So
I see.
That would increase the amount of people that should be coming to the park to look at it at night, if that's possible. And I'm not sure, but division of who does what there is what Mr. Ellis is gonna bring up later on, because I know you folk, District Five, will not allow volunteers in there now, it's too dangerous. That's what Officer Miura told me, so.
We'll follow up with that.
Huh? Yeah.
We will follow up with that.
And also, the other part of it is, you have to remember, in the park at night, you have people parking for hospice because somebody's dying. So I used to open the park and close it after they left at night, 10, 11, 12 o'clock. So I retired from it and got old, so. No more than 6 o'clock in the morning, so that's it.
Thank you for your service.
For two years.
Thank you, Paula.
Yeah.
I don't believe we have anybody else from the board, so I'll call in, I think, a member of the committee, Mike Ellis.
Hi, as a concerned citizen, with regards to the police patrol that we have in the area. Recently, I had reported a car that was encroaching upon the sidewalk area. And I was asked if I wanted to meet with the officer, and I did. And I saw the violation, I had to explain to him the purpose of my call, that it creates a problem with any handicap person using it, especially one with a wheelchair, trying to get past a car that's either sticking out onto the sidewalk area or the, you know, that just blocks the use of the sidewalk completely. And I was, I was just surprised that, I thought they would cite the the car with the traffic violation or a ticket. And the officer said it's his discretion. Here, we're trying to enforce people to be obedient, I mean, obey the laws. And yet, the officer said it's my discretion whether I ticket him or not. And that surprised me, because I just felt that perhaps they shouldn't have been ticketed. And so that the owners of the, of the property would know what to do. You know, try to prevent their guests or individuals from parking the way they do, which creates a real hazard on the fast approaching cars that are coming down from Poli Highway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, may I ask, a street that would be? Was it, was it on the Poli Highway, sir?
Yes, it's fronting 2960 Poli Highway.
Okay. Are there any other issues where there's parking complaints there? Do you have the date and the time of that particular incident, sir?
Well, this one, this one occurred, this one occurred just within the last few days. I probably can't recall, it could have been on Saturday. I went out and visited, and it took about three calls, three phone calls, individual phone calls, to at least get someone to come up. Or someone else may have come up and said, no, I don't see any violation, because it was his discretion, which I feel is not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern, Mr. Ellis. Anytime that you have officers come out and you're not satisfied with their service, you can always request for a supervisor to also come out, yeah? Can you request for a supervisor? And did the supervisor come out?
No, he says, oh, he's on vacation or something. He was away. I said, well, there must be, could I have a sergeant that can come up and visit with us on this? Because it's a continuing problem.
What time was this, sir?
Probably around early afternoon or around there, or 4 o'clock or so. But it's a continuing problem. They do, they do nothing to curb the problem, and it's a serious situation. I witnessed a wheelchair person having a difficult time because of the elevation of the ramp to the driveway.
I understand, yeah, I'll follow up with the.
They need at least thirty inches.
Okay, I'll follow up with the day watch officers and supervisor to see what happened on that incident. You said a few days ago, yeah, around around early afternoon, like 12 o'clock, you said?
Oh, probably.
4:00 PM.
Well, I started calling about 10 o'clock when I saw violation. And I had to call again about an hour later. And then my third call finally got answered, where they sent some, they asked me the question, would you like to meet with an officer? I said, yes, that would be good, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll follow up with this, with this concern, sir. Thank you again.
Okay, I have another question, perhaps on the report that you have for District Five. Is it possible, and again, I'm infringing upon perhaps a request that perhaps should come from the chair. But is it possible to have on to report a monthly statistics of traffic violations such as speeding on Poli Highway? I mean, we have a speed limit of 30 miles through the residential area, but we know everyone's going about 40, 45, 55 miles. And we're not getting the enforcement, we're not getting the officers to do as much. But I just wanted to find out, in my own mind, how many traffic tickets or traffic violations for speeding on Poli Highway during the period of one month?
Is there a particular of the day, Sarah, that you're looking for?
Oh, no, it happens, it happens 24 hours. So anytime that an officer is patrolling or with a speed gun, I mean, you know, he'll, you'll find that the majority of the the drivers are always exceeding 30 miles an hour.
Right.
Mr. Ellis, I just wanted to report for the month of June, for the past 17 days, our officers issued out so far for the month of June, they issued out 48 citations for speeding in the area. Not only have they been issuing out speeding citations in there, they've also been increasing the patrols in the area also. So they are aware of the speeding problem that are going on on the Poli Highway, and they are taking action over there. So that's only half a month that we have.
I'm experiencing.
Half a month, and we've already issued out 48 citations for speeding.
Well, 48 to me is very low. I had a.
Oh, well, it's only half a month, sir.
Excuse me?
Well, that was just for half a month.
Oh, well, it's still low. I'm sure there are more. I can go down Poli Highway on 30 miles, and I'll have 25 cars pass me within a mile. And it's just getting very dangerous.
For the month of May, it looks like we gave out over 70. So we are continuing to do speed enforcement on the Poli Highway.
Okay, I think what we need also is that we used to have a hump by fronting Quinima, Summer Palace driveway, that was removed. I crossed that hump. Rather, I walked the crosswalk one day. And it's amazing how many cars speed, and I got to the island and no one stopped until I stepped into the lane of traffic. Those are the things that need to be, you know, enforced.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I agree. I mean, we have officers out there doing traffic enforcement, and and we explain to them why we're out there, and the concerns that are being brought up by the board members or the community members, and we've actually had community members that decided to degrade our officers on social media about giving speeding citations out there, because we're out there so much.
Oh, I think they.
Yeah, our officers, our officers continue to be out there, and they do conduct traffic enforcement.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Are there any other questions for the officers from District Five? Hearing none. Thank you, Sergeant Tablet and Lieutenant Yamashita. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Paula.
I just want to tell the officers, thank you very much. February last year, you did 87 citations. My question is, how does DOJ accept this? Because it's at 30 miles an hour. Do they say it's only two miles over, five miles over, whatever? And then let them all go? So of the number of citations that are given, how many really stick? You know what I mean? Because I think the police officers are wasting their time. DOJ is not supporting you folks. And number two, is you're talking about, you're talking about handicapped people, but the word is not handicapped anymore, it's disabled. Mentally disabled, physically disabled. So you throw that word away, handicap, because there's a physical therapist that bothers me, so. And I think, and I think that you are doing a great job. But on our inside streets, we've also got a major problem in the school zone at New Uwana Valley School. Bad time.
Okay, thank you, Paula. Officers, did you want to respond to anything, or if not, that's okay.
No, thank you.
Officers, thank you very much. Thank you for all our officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Next up, we have our Neighborhood Security Watch report, and Paula?
I, I know I've done a lot of in-between talking about all the different things going on here. We did have a burglary recently on Upper Dalset. People are saying it happened, but, you know, as far as the one even on Henry Street with the gambling, I want to know exactly how much is really going on in this area as far as most of my people that are on the Executive Committee of the Neighborhood Security Watch need to know what we're dealing with, because not to include the speeding, which is unbelievably killing. Like October, in front of my house, 13 ducks were killed. So, and this is a school zone. So all these different things are happening, but how do we get feedback? Do we get feedback only through community policing or from the HPD at District Five?
Okay.
Because the statistics you're giving me are from New Uwana all the way over to the airport and back. And that wouldn't give us specifics as far as our area on this side of the Poli Highway.
I think you can go to HPD's website and see the crime map. I'm not sure how easy that is to capture only specific areas, but that would give you more information.
It is, it is good, but my seniors, a lot of them don't have computers and cell phones. Most of them are in their 80s and 90s, so.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for our Neighborhood Security Watch?
No, I think I covered it already.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Jimmy from Border Water Supply.
Yeah, I pulled out that chair right there. Oh, okay. I'll stand here. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jimmy Anos, and I'll be representing Border Water Supply tonight. I'm just gonna start with two updates from the previous month. The first is about the Puiva Road 12-inch and Dalset Avenue 8-inch water system improvements project. So I'm here to report that on June 4, 2025, the Border Water Supply submitted the draft archaeological inventory survey to the State Historic Preservation Division, or SHFD, for review. Our consultant is currently finalizing the archaeological monitoring plan, which will soon be submitted to SHFD. BWS manager and chief engineer Ernest Lau recently met with the head of SHFD to help expedite the approval process for this project. And while SHFD is still working through a backlog of other projects, we're optimistic the process will wrap up soon. So the second update is about the Alika Street paving. So at the end of May, a moving truck damaged a part of the recent paving of Alika Drive. But our contractor returned during the week of June 9 and completed paving repairs. So those were the updates from last one. So I'm gonna move on to my main break report. So there are four main breaks in the month of May. The first was a 6-inch diameter pipe at 2940 Park Street with install year 1936. The second was on May 7. That was an 8-inch diameter pipe at 3230 Kaohinani Drive. And that had install year 1999. The third was on May 15. An 8-inch diameter pipe at 38 Wood Street with install year 2007. And last one was May 30. That was a 12-inch diameter pipe at 3624 Waikanaaka Street with unknown install year. So finally, I'm gonna talk about the general water announcements of the water quality report. Each year, the Border Water Supply mails customers an annual report on the quality and contents of our drinking water. Effective July 1, 2025, the BWS will be providing this report on a biannual basis, issued in July and December of each year. The report is available online at wwwboardofwatersupply.com. And for more information and to request a translated copy, please call the BWS Communications Office at 808-748-5041. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the board for the Border Water Supply? Uh, do you have any questions from anybody?
Uh, Mister Mike Ellis.
Okay, uh, Mike Ellis, please go ahead.
I just had a question with regards to the break and the replacement on twenty-nine forty Park Street. Does that affect the pressure that we're receiving now? I mean, it seems real low, the pressure. I mean, it's great. I'm not using that that much water and my sewer bill is less when I do that. But I just wondered if if that one had any effect on the pressure of the water uh in in one's home.
Um. Yeah, I think usually when there's a main break, that would lower the pressure. Um, but I can check. I mean, I'm pretty sure the main break.
Yeah.
It was repaired already, but I can check.
When are they gonna come back? When are they gonna come back and and repatch the grass and take the cones away?
Uh, that I'll I'll follow up on. Um, I'll ask them when they're gonna repatch the grass and take the cones away.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there uh anything further for Border Water Supply? Hearing none. Jimmy, um, oh, I did want to ask you. So uh, just in the water quality report, does that include like the so-called forever chemicals? I think the polyfluoro, uh, I can't recall. Yeah, if you would have asked.
Yeah, I'll check if it includes the PFAS you're talking about.
PFAS, okay. Okay, uh, hearing nothing, hearing no other questions. Thank you very much.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead Paula.
Uh, can I ask the Border Water Supply um why it takes so long to do Puiva? And that the principal of the school at this time is worried about when they start. If they do it now, there will be no schooling in session to stop everything um because of the traffic and he knows it's gonna be excessive amounts of traffic for parents to get their kids to school if you wait too long. So I was wondering, as a hint, that maybe you could get it going so they won't have a problem on Puiva with traffic. Thank you.
I believe that's so noted. He will, Jimmy will follow up. I could see from his expression, so. Yes, we um, I think Jimmy will follow up, so. Hearing uh, hearing uh no further uh questions. Thank you very much, Jimmy, for coming out and thank you for your report.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, next up, we have our. Oh, thank you. Uh, next up, we have our filling of vacancies. Is there anybody online from that lives around Punch Bowl? We don't have to get specific at the moment. We can ask if anyone's interested their their technical resident residency. But is there anyone around Punch Bowl that would uh like to serve on the board? Hearing none, uh, we can move on to our reports from non-board events. First off, we have uh Ray G with the Oahu MPO. Ray?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I asked Patrick and he did so put on our Google Drive, the Oahu MPO newsletter. But I'm not gonna read it to you. Um, just to report from the meeting at the CAC, which is the Citizens Advisory Group that I attended in beginning of the month. Um, the statewide transportation improvement program plan, which is the short-term STIP, which is three years. The planning document for projects within three years for the um DOT and the city county on Lululeu DTS. Those projects, um, there's an administrative amendment coming up, so it doesn't affect our neighborhood. So I won't be going into that, but they're calling for comments. So if you're interested in looking at it or getting comments, then you can go to the Oahu MPO website. Number two, um, they did make a presentation on the transportation demand management program for statewide employees, which I am one of them because I work for the Department of Agriculture. Um, but it doesn't affect our neighborhood board. It's just um various parking programs and encouraging um other modes of transportation for statewide employees to use other than driving their vehicles. Um, also, the state is also looking at through their uh Department of Transportation or statewide coordinator to encourage employees to um utilize incentives that they will be offering in the future to encourage employees not to use their vehicles. Maybe like um encouraging them to have a bus pass or a future parking cash out program where instead of requesting a parking space, um, they can get cash in advance for their career to use um to encourage them not to drive to work. Anyway, those types of programs are all being proposed, but nothing set in stone as of at a, you know, at at this time. There's a report, so if you need to or want to look at that report, I can always um provide that information in the chat. But otherwise, there was no um, no projects affecting our neighborhood board as usual. And I think they did have a list of intersections in that newsletter, so go to our new um Neighborhood Board Google Drive and take a look at it, which has the future complete street projects. And there were a lot of um, I guess roadway improvements planned for uh Poli Highway and Leha uh or School Street, you know, various intersections that are out of our Neighborhood Board, but may impact you if you drive, you know, drive through those areas since you shop in at Poli Longs or Poli Safeway. Um, what have you. So take a look at that newsletter. It's at our um Neighborhood Board Google Drive area and um that would be concluding my report for June. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Are there any questions from anybody?
Yeah, Pat raised her hand.
Pat, Pat's here.
Uh, possibly, yeah.
Okay, Pat.
Hi. Hi, um, I was just wondering why a zigzag crosswalk was installed at Poli Highway and Wood Street?
Oh. A zigzag crosswalk? That would be a question for Department of Transportation. So we could ask.
Is it not part of complete streets?
If it is, it uh would be under the city and county jurisdiction, Department of Transportation Services. Um, I don't have an answer for that because I'm not a representative from that department.
Yeah, Pat, I I I'm sorry, Pat, I'd probably um hold that question until we have Director Hashira, who's the mayor's rep, which will be just just a couple minutes or a few minutes. And that would probably direct it to her. Thank you. Are there any other uh questions regarding that? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ray. Uh, next up, we have our uh Papakalea Community Report. Is Adrian online? Adrian, do you have anything?
Adrian is online.
Thank you.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, for Papakalea, I wanted to uh share that uh our our nonprofit Kulunano Poi Hawai received a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to expand our Kupuna Community Care Network uh for the next two years. Uh, on June eleventh, uh, the Veliko High Program that we're working with with Roosevelt High School had about sixty people uh go to New Zealand. They will return on um June twenty-fifth. They had approximately twenty-eight students and parents and uh faculty from Roosevelt. Uh, they're doing a cultural exchange uh with a mental health program where the kids will be learning about peer-to-peer counseling. On May twenty-fifth, uh Nalea O'Papakalea, who is also our firewise organization, had thirty volunteers uh go and work on uh fire zones around uh people's homes and they did a hundred and fifty hours. They did two homes in Kavalo, two homes in Kalawahini and five in Papakalea, uh filling up thirty twenty-foot roll-off bins. And uh they will continue to work on that in community. Uh, I think that's kind of where we are. We will have our next uh Polina Po'awaina meeting about the project for Po'awaina tomorrow, where we'll be discussing fund development with community. So we continue to work on that project. And so busy and moving in Papakalea. So we're appreciative to OHA. Um, and uh Senator Fukunaga, Fukunaga attended our last meeting and will possibly be meeting with us tomorrow as we discuss fund development and the challenges everybody are having to just keep um, keep on course. But we are continuing to do the work, so. That's kind of what we're doing right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Are there any uh questions about Papakalea? Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it. And that sounds like great things and Carol, Carol Fukunaga is just the greatest, I think. So I'm glad everything's working out. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have our residents and community concerns. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak to a concern? Okay, well, I want to bring one up and this hopefully is uh okay under sunshine law because it's an emergency repair. I just got noticed on uh Friday afternoon. And this is at thirty-seven oh eight New Huonu Palley Drive and it's to repair damaged sections of a rock wall. Uh, this came from apparently a contractor, not the city itself, so I don't know uh under what auspices they're doing it with. I assume it's not Border Water Supply. But in any event, on the uh web, on our Google Drive, which is at the top of our agenda, there is a letter explaining the project and there's like a twenty-five page specs. It's more than you want to know about the project. So if there are any questions, I I would say please consult that that material. Because I I won't know, but I want to make your aware of that. So are there any other community concerns? Hearing none, we can move on to our uh elected official reports. And first up, we have uh Mayor Blagianis, um, the mayor's representative, which is Director Kim Hashira. Director?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, starting with the mayor's newsletter, which I will link in the chat box. Uh, Mayor Blangiardi and US military leaders participated in an annual Memorial Day remembrance ceremony at Punch Bowl. Um, there's also a report of the arrival of seventeen new lifesaving vehicles that marks a historic day for Honolulu's emergency medical services. City leaders participate in a series of tributes for Honolulu Police Week honoring fallen soldiers or I'm sorry, fallen officers who died in the line of duty. Also, a group of city bus drivers and dispatchers are honored by Mayor Blangiardi for an incredible fifty years of service to our communities. And lastly, the city's annual joint food drive with the state of Hawaii culminated food bank finale at Honolulu Hale. Uh, moving on to the uh departmental issues and follow-ups. So there was a DFM response uh to an inquiry regarding replacing Pa'o'a area street signs. And DFM responded, DFM's Division of Road Maintenance responded that they've initiated service requests numbers and I will insert that into the chat also. Um, and that sign replacement will be scheduled after fabrication has been completed and resources are available. Next item was for the Department of Planning and Permitting um about an abandoned overgrown property at thirty-two seventeen Ka'o Hinani Drive. And DPP is requesting um additional time. They need to um complete their investigation and I will provide you with a a report at our next meeting. Next item was also for DPP. Um, they are also requesting an extension um due to needing more time to investigate and this was worsening illegal parking um and STR violations. So this is the ongoing Turo issue on Henry Street that was mentioned at last meeting. Next item was regarding a garage converted to a STR property and pedestrian safety. Uh, so this was regarding a garage at twenty-nine sixty highway that is not being used as a garage, but appears to be converted to a short-term rental. So the r- report from HPD is that they're aware of concerns regarding illegal parking at twenty-nine sixty Poli Highway. On March eighteenth, Officer Noli Galacha, Galicha of District Five investigated this parking complaint. He did not observe any parking violations during his check. Uh, from April twenty-fifth through thirtieth, the same officer made checks at this location um during his shifts and observed no illegal parking. And also um on June third and fourth, the same officer investigated um this complaint again and he also did not observe any park parking violations at this time. What HPD is recommending is that although officers are monitoring the area for illegal parking, residents are advised to call nine-one-one immediately at the time illegal parking is observed so that police officers can be dispatched to make checks. Uh, DPP is also involved in this request and again, they're requesting an extension due to needing more time to investigate. Uh, as mentioned earlier, um, the Poli Highway concern regarding the raised crosswalk on Wood Street. Um, this is actually not under the jurisdiction of the City Department of Transportation Services. It is actually under the State Department of Transportation. And I did reach out to um Director Ed Sniffin and asked if someone from HDOT uh could attend our next meeting in July. So I'm hoping that someone will be able to attend and be able to respond to questions um regarding this raised crosswalk at that time. And that concludes my report. If there are any other additional community concerns, I can take them and we will follow up at a future meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Pat, I don't know if uh that um i- if you want to wait until next month, but I suppose it's a uh as Director mentioned, it is a state issue. I didn't really think about that, but uh, did you want to follow up with any comments?
Um, the only thing is, so it's not a part of uh complete streets?
I don't believe it's a part of complete streets, which is a city project. This is a state highway. And so what the city's role is, is we program on the traffic lights primarily. So DTS, city DTS does that. But it actually is under the direction of state DOT. So state DOT will make decisions regarding programming of the traffic lights and DTS will actually implement um regarding any kind of safety concerns, traffic calming, uh crosswalks, that is under state DOT.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, actually, it's crazy. Hi. Uh, may I speak?
I I'm sorry, can you identify yourself, please?
Patrick.
Uh, this is Mark Oyama.
Okay, hold on just one second, please. Let me uh, let me go to Sylvia first and I'll come back to the caller online.
Okay.
Go ahead Sylvia.
Kim, I wanted to say thank you because this year's King Kamehane Mayhoday Parade on Saturday as as well as that um Golden Week or whatever parade that was all was that was on Sunday, that back-to-back parade in Waikiki. The traffic situation was much better than that Aloha Week one. So I think, you know, um the police were stationed in the proper places on Kalia Road. But the one thing that they need to do is move that um local traffic sign further out by um the intersection of Ala Moana and Kalia Road and Ina Road so that people wouldn't go through because you you can't go anywhere. So the people were making U-turns on um Saratoga Road and having to come back. So I think it'd be wiser if that sign was just moved out to the main intersection so nobody would turn right unless they were going to one of the businesses in that area, the hotels.
Okay, I can uh definitely relay that message.
Okay, but thank you.
I'm glad it was better.
Yep.
Thank you. Now, we had the phone caller. Can you identify yourself, please, and then proceed with your question or comment?
Hello.
Hello. Yeah, go ahead, please.
This is Mark Oyama, living at three-one-six-three Pali Highway. This is the, this is basically the location of the raised crosswalk at Wood Street and Pali Highway. So, since we, since we have a, since we have a representative from the city and county here right now, that's live, I wanted to ask them, is there a, my concern is that strips installed next to my house are making a lot of noise. So, I wanted to ask, is there any sort of city ordinance that the Department of Transportation has to abide by regarding the volume of the noise that is generated by their, their road, their road markings?
I can ask that question. I'm, I'm not sure. I can, I can ask that question, and we can find out.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank, thank you. We will have the governor's representative on here in a few minutes, so that, that could also be directed to him, too.
Mr. Chair?
Paula, go ahead.
I would like to ask him, my dog shuts up, to know that I requested through the customer service. Will you start through my customer service that the people on Pelikani would like a sidewalk put in from Ka'inani down to Upper Dalseth? That could be rubberized or some way so that when they're coming down the mountain, they don't slide because it rains over here so much?
Why don't I ask Brandon to reach out to you and see if you can get the exact locations? And that way, we're knowing exactly.
From the top of Ka'inani down to the bottom at the bridge on Pelikani to Upper Dalseth.
Okay.
And we want to, we want a paper legally to allow people, the hundred percent have said that they want the sidewalk because now the children walking to school are walking down the middle of the road. We've got speeding in that area, very bad, killing ducks, et cetera. We've got seniors walking. We've got women with baby carriages walking down the mountain. And everybody's walking in the middle of the road, and it's not safe. So, if we can get a sidewalk put in that's rubberized, like the person asked previously because they were falling on the bridge, the cement, make some kind of cement that people could walk down the side of the mountain instead of in the middle of the road. And that we have a hundred percent sign up for it if we can get the proper people work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the mayor's representative? Hearing none, thank you very much, Director Peshiro.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Do we have a representative from his office?
Hi, Lisa's here.
Oh, good evening, Lisa. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Aloha, A- Chair, Board Members, Residents, and Meeting Participants. I am Lisa Leonardo here, on behalf of Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. I'll be providing updates on four items. So, the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, or HARD, and its city center guideway and stations contractor, Tudor Karini Corporation invites the public to attend the upcoming Polau or Chinatown Station Neighborhood Design Workshop on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, from six P.M. to eight-thirty P.M. at the Ke'elani Middle School Cafeteria. Attendees will have the opportunity to engage with project representatives, ask questions, and provide feedback on the station's preliminary design. And you can see more information in our District Six newsletter. Number two, Hawaiian Electric shares that there is financial assistance to pay for electric bills available through June thirtieth. The federal government's Hawaii Home Energy Assistance Program may be able to help. Please visit Hawaiian Electric's website to view additional financial assistance options, and their link will be provided in the chat. On Wednesday, June fourth, council passed the city's budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which includes a five-point-two billion operating and capital budget. This budget includes funding for various initiatives like affordable housing, public safety, and infrastructure projects. A notable aspect of the budget is a plan to increase sewer fees to address deferred upgrades to the city's sewer infrastructure. And number four, today, there was a special council held at two P.M. for Resolution twenty-five dash one seven zero relating to the officers of the Council of the City and County of Honolulu. This reso, by council with nine I's, reorganized council leadership with Andrea Tupola as vice-chair and Esther Kiaaina as floor leader. This concludes my report for this evening. I will include this information in the chat, a link to keep connected with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam through social media, and my contact information. Please feel free to contact our office if you have any questions or concerns, and mahalo for having me.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the council member from anybody? I could just clarify, so, well, okay, let me, let me ask real quick, though. So, is Councilmember Warner still the chair of the?
Yes, yes. It just changed the vice-chair and the floor leader.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, do we have any questions? Okay, Adrienne, I'll get you answered. And Paula, go ahead, please.
I want to know if your office can take care of Pueva Lane under the bridge and out into the water, where they did one side of the bridge at Pueva to clean out the stream, but they didn't do under the bridge and down the next part of it, down into the subdivision. Was wondering if he could look into that and see if that could be cleaned also.
Yes, definitely, we can do that. I might have Lynn give you a call just to get more specifics.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Adrienne, go ahead, please.
Papa Clay, I would like to know if we could have something in writing from the councilman to give us an update on the never appearing speed bumps, you know, for timeless drive? And a follow-up on what's happening, whether or not there will be any traffic commerce for AWI Limo in front of Lincoln School. We think we've been very patient, but we want, now we want it in writing from him.
Sure.
I will. Thank you.
I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Adrienne, just to ask, how, that request, has it been in quite a while, right? For the speed bump?
It's been in decades, Patrick, decades.
I didn't realize it was that long, so, yeah.
Every councilman that comes along, we, we start all over, and every other community seems to be fine in getting speed bumps. We have a park, we have children crossing tapless, we have people speeding through. We, we've had a death. We've had another one, you know, this year, somebody on a bicycle. So, we just don't understand what the challenge is. We're told we need to wait for round-top and other people, but we still have kids that are crossing tapless that are not really as safe if we like them, and we still know there's a challenge in front of Lincoln School. So, the community continues to ask, the speed bumps we have are the furthest end where people really don't go, but in front of the park, we want to calm traffic.
Yeah, this is a, I believe that there was a response from DTS a while back, but I'll do a follow-up on this.
We went from forty-five to seventeen on the list, was told we had to wait for a round-top or somebody else to make it so they could do it all at once. But at this point, we want to get our kids safe. And running back and forth to the park.
Yeah, if we could just get a clarification as to maybe where we stand and when that we can expect it to be installed, or, and if not, why not, that kind of thing.
Yes, we'll do. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any? Mike Ellis, please go ahead.
Thank you. I had a question with regards to the city's CIP budget. Is there any way that we could determine what amounts for CIP projects in the Neighborhood Board Number Twelve? Are there any figures for that or anything that was submitted that gives us an idea as how much monies are coming for Neighborhood Board Number Twelve as far as improvements?
Okay, I can look that up, and I believe I have your email. I can respond to you by email.
Okay, is it broken down by sub-districts also?
I can ask the same. We'll do that.
Yeah, I sort of have the concern, you know, we may have it there in the budget, and yet some way gets reallocated to another department, such as the traffic signals that we would have had at Wood and Pali Highway. And if we're not, you know, up on it, we'll lose it, so.
Got that right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final questions? Hearing none, thank you very much, Lisa, for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Governor Josh Green's representative.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Kayla. I'm going to be the governor's representative going forward. First, I just want to share that I'm going to put the governor's newsletter in the chat, but just some updates that are going to be on it this month. So, it talks a lot about the historic grain fee law that just got enacted, so Act Ninety-Six, which is the first climate impact fee in the nation. So, beginning in twenty-twenty-six, the grain fee will increase the TOT rate, or TAT rate, sorry. So, the tax on accommodations less than a hundred and eighty days. So, people visiting Hawaii for less than a hundred and eighty days, and it'll be raised by point seventy-five percent, which is supposed, expected to generate around a hundred million dollars annually that goes into the state's climate change mitigation, disaster resilience, and sustainable tourism efforts. There's also the Hawaii Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. County of Maui released their Maui Economic Recovery Commission Report, which is the report over, of all of the state's efforts over the past two years of what they've been doing to mitigate the economic effects of the wildfires. And then there's also other topics in the newsletter that include the coconut rhinoceros beetles, so what the state is doing on the neighbor islands. I think they just treated over seven hundred palm trees on the Big Island, and then they're doing more inspections for all agriculture coming in from Oahu. And then a couple of different other things that's in the newsletter, and that newsletter will be in the chat. I also did want to provide a quick update on the newly-installed raised crosswalks along Pali Highway and Road Street. So, I was informed before this that there were some concerns over the noise from the new raised crosswalks, and so I did reach out to DOT to try and get an update for you guys. And they did let me know that the DOT lab conducted a noise test and took noise level measurements at the raised crosswalks, and this was done on June fourth. So, currently, they're just awaiting the findings, so I'm hoping to have a bigger update next month on what the findings from those tests were. And that's all I have for tonight, but if anyone has any questions or concerns that I can take back.
Thanks, thank you. Do we have any questions for the, hold on just one second? Pat, go ahead, please. Pat Tierra?
I, I'm just, I have concerns about the crosswalk that was redone at Wood Street and Pali Highway. I needed to know, I just want to know what the reasoning is for a zigzag crosswalk. Normally, crosswalks go all the way, you know, straight across the highway, but this one was changed. You walk across the Ka'ilua-bound lanes. When you get to the median, you have to turn right, walk about ten feet, turn left, and walk across the townbound lanes. It confuses the heck out of the drivers because they see me walking along the median, and so they go. They were stopped there, but because I'm not crossing the lanes in front of them, they just continue, they just drive, and if there's a whole bunch of people who are waiting there thinking that I was going to cross in front of them, they all go. So, it's very dangerous for pedestrians. So, I just, you know, why was that done?
Yeah, I can definitely. Oh, sorry.
And you, and you just have to experience it yourself. I was going to take a video, however, it is against the law to cross the street looking at your cell phone. So, I didn't do that, but you need to go out and experience this for yourself. It is unbelievable. You, it has you scratching your head.
I can definitely take that back and try and get what the reasonings for the design of this was.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next up, Paula?
Not only that zigzags over there, there's also, all the sticks that are on there are all broken off as you pass Wood Street. No one has replaced those, but people are changing lanes, like was mentioned earlier, changing lanes at a fast speed. DOT, which is under the governor, I guess, coming up the valley going Ka'ilua-bound, they're doing fifty-seven miles an hour. Entering the valley, they're coming in at fifty-nine miles an hour. And then on top of that, I'm speaking for a man, he's, he spoke earlier, but Mark Oyama. He wants you to know that the noise now not only is on his side by his window, where no one from DOT came to tell him what was going on, but when he went to ask, they gave him a really rough time. They were not very nice to him. Now, not only are the rumble strips, which are not supposed to be called rumble strips because we had those all before, and they were taken out many years ago, those rumble strips are now also on the other side of the road, the other side coming in. So, you get double noise. So, I think somebody should look into this because DOT not sure, not talking to the people in the neighborhood who have to live with it, and that is a sin to me. You don't, you get, come out your front door, and then you got to listen to all this noise, or you stay up all night because you hear somebody knocking on your door all night from the noise? That's not right. And I think the governor should look into what DOT is doing on the Pali. And then here we are at Wood Street. We couldn't get a light. We lost our bus, which really is a sin. And we want to know from this neighborhood, do we have to take, pay full taxes? Because we're not getting what we're supposed to be getting. As general practices would go for a city. We're being denied all the things that make us safe, and whoever's getting the money for pedestrians, they better look into this before somebody gets killed again. We've already had one murder over here. I call it a murder. We've already had one man trying to cross like Pat Tyra was trying to tell you, crossing the street. You get two cars parked, then stop, then the third lane coming down speeds and kills you. It's not right what's going on there, and I think the governor should look into that seriousness. It's really serious to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Kayla, if you have something else, is it? So, are there any other questions? Hearing none. Kayla, thank you very much. We appreciate if you, yeah, we'll take that back to the governor. We'd love to hear a response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Senator Carl Roeths, and the senator is joining us in person this evening. Thank you, Senator.
Hello, everyone. Let's see what I got for you tonight. The Department of Health confirmed a second case of the measles in April, and measles is one of the most contagious viruses in the world. So, best protection against measles is the NMR vaccine. So, if you are concerned at all that you are not up to date, you should probably check. Two, I want to talk about two concurrent resolutions from this past session that I introduced in the past. First was SCR one thirty-one, the Surgeons' State to acquire the Hawaii First was, uh, S C R one thirty-one, the Surgeons' State to acquire the Hawaii Theater to promote local arts, cultural arts and preserve its historic and cultural significance and facilitate its continued public use. We will be working on that. There, like a lot of entities right now, they're having a real hard time with, um, insurance premiums, so just exorbitant insurance premiums. So, um, this resolution was one way to try to address that and we'll see if we can make something happen. But, um, that, that did pass both. So concurrent resolutions aren't signed by the governor, they're not laws. But when it passes both houses, Senate, it is, um, indicates what we like to see somebody do, the executive branch in this case. Another resolution I introduced this year, which passed both houses also, was S C R one twenty-eight. Purpose of this is pretty simple. It requires the Attorney General to catalog all leases federal entities currently have with the state. My concern then is that if the federal government's gonna make significant cuts for programs and projects in Hawaii, we may need to reconsider whether we can afford to lease large parcels of land to the federal government for nominal amounts. Uh, there's a number of quite large pieces of land that are being leased for a dollar a year. And I just wanted to see what the inventory is, who's got what and what they're paying, whether we should be thinking about asking for more considering, uh, the uncertainty from the, from the federal side. Uh, the Hawaii State Library has launched its twenty twenty-five Summer Reading Challenge, started on June first, goes to July thirty-one to encourage, uh, reading for individuals of all ages. There are different sets of goals for children versus teens, adults, and adults. And prizes will be awarded. Some of them are quite good. The grand prize is four round trip tickets to anywhere Alaska flies. So worth, uh, worth reading lots of books for, besides the inherent joy of reading books. Uh, you can visit the following website for more information and to register. It's libraries Hawaii, one phrase, libraries Hawaii dot org slash summer reading, also one phrase. Excuse me. Libraries Hawaii dot org slash summer reading. Uh, anytime you need to get ahold of me, my number is five eight six six one three zero, five eight six six one three zero. And, uh, Sen Roads in Hawaii, and sorry, capital dot Hawaii dot com. S E N R H O A D S, all one phrase at capital dot Hawaii dot com. Uh, there were some follow-ups from last month. I think Chair had a question about, um, some law enforcement proposals having to do with.
Uh, yeah, if I could, if I could reiterate really quickly. I went to, um, Neighborhood Board Nine, which is Waikiki, and a Department of Law, law enforcement official came and asked the community for support in creating what I would term a surveillance network. That's my language, not theirs. And it would incorporate, um, it would be a collection of video from third parties, like hotels and such. Uh, there would be, there, there would have some monitoring that you could electively wear like a bracelet and that was mainly designed for kids or, um, uh, disabled, disabled, I guess, older folks. But the other part is there was a discussion of, uh, car, um, vehicle regi- or, uh, license plate, you know, monitoring equipment for people, cars potentially coming into Waikiki. And I didn't hear anything other than, the first time I heard it was at that meeting and I was a little, uh, taken back because the privacy implications of it are pretty significant, especially when you hear the, what other states are doing, like Texas with the abortion. I don't know if you're, um, familiar, but Texas illegally apparently went into data, it's other states' database to track down women getting abortion services. So my question to you was, um, were you aware of this program? Uh, you know, what, what type of government oversight would, will there be?
Uh, no, well, my recollection is that there have been bills introduced in the past for the license scanners because you can basically, you just have this machine that just reads everybody's license plates and go by. So the ideal is to catch stolen vehicles primarily. Uh, my recollection did not pass. Uh, the voluntary stuff, I, I, I think pretty much everything that they're asking for there probably does require a bill. So I'm the chair of the Judiciary Committee. I, um, would look at anything that's not voluntary pretty skeptically. I mean, for someone who, um, i- if you wanna be part of a program like that, I, you know, that's, that's fine. I don't have objection to that. But, um, you know, but I would certainly give any proposal like that a lot of scrutiny. There's always a trade-off, right? If you're willing to give up privacy, it does improve the security situation, assuming you can trust the, the enforcers. When I, I studied, I have a master's in Soviet and East European area studies and there are some cases you cannot trust the enforcers. But, um, yeah, so that, that's the short answer is I, it would come to judiciary, I'm very skeptical.
Thank you. Um, if I could follow up just really quickly and say, the, the part of my concern was the privacy issue. Like who would have access to this database? Who, you know, how long would be ma- the information be maintained and that sort of thing, just to let you know. So that, that's a part of it. And, you know, whether third parties could have that. So with that, um, let me get to the questions from, uh.
Ray G or Paula?
Uh, Ray G, please. Paula, I'll get to you in a second. Ray?
Hi, Senator. Hi, Senator. Thank you very much for your wonderful report. And I don't know if this is your jurisdiction or not, and it's probably city. But just to let you know that there's, um, there's a camera, a sophisticated video camera strapped to a telephone pole or, or some kind of wooden pole on Ahi Place. And it's probably right across my house, which is forty Ahi Place. And all of the neighbors wanted to know, cause there's a solar panel attached to it and it seems to be facing the road. I'm not sure if it's also facing my property. And it's pointing towards the end of the cul-de-sac, towards the golf course. Uh, I should have brought this up earlier. It might be city, cause I think Ahi is a city road. But yeah, wouldn't there be privacy issues for an instance like that? And this camera has been strapped to this pole and it's pretty obvious. Um, it's very sophisticated, cause my husband said it's not a cheap camera. It's not like a Ring camera that Joe Blow wants to just monitor traffic on our street. Um, but it really looks like an invasion of privacy, cause it's, but it's on the street. But still, have you ever seen any other streets have this type of camera mechanism? And we don't know where the data is going, who's using it, et cetera, et cetera. But yeah, since you guys are talking.
I will try to find out whose it is. I, I don't know. Um, I mean, that's, there's, there's a camera, a similar sounding camera that's in the Longs, uh, Longs Poly, um, parking lot now because they've had a lot of trouble with, um, illegal activity there. But let me, let me try to find out and I'll, I'll get back to you before next month or bu- hopefully by next month. But I, I don't know.
Thanks, cause it's, yeah, cause this is a pri- public roadway, um, and you know, Polly Longs is a private, that we privately own property. So yeah, appreciate if you could ask around and s- maybe it's not your jurisdiction, but I, I'll also ask city representative to check my map. Thank you.
We can try to find out.
Thank you. Uh, Paula, I believe you're next.
I wanted to thank the Senator for allowing our helping or doing with Jenna Takineuchi to get a bill passed that has to do with helmets. And I know Adrian had mentioned it earlier. We, we are so thrilled that we could get the bill from sixteen down to the bottom for everyone needing a helmet when they're riding on some wheels. Whether it's skates or skateboards or motors, motor scooters or now it's bikie bikes. So I was hearing from you exactly what the bill does entail for helmets and who's supposed to be wearing them.
Uh, well, there were actually several helmet bills. Only one of them was inspired by you that I introduced. Um, that was the one for skateboarders, I believe. And it's anybody in a, anybody in a public place under the age of sixteen, I wanna say. Has to be a public, you can, you can ride without them on your own driveway or whatever. But that was, that was the bill. And it passed.
Okay.
Assigned it.
Okay. Was there any reason why it didn't include twenty-one years old and down?
Um, I don't remember how we introduced it. I think it was felt that at that age, it, it was, um, most things we let you do at eighteen. Not everything, smoking and drinking, you can, you have to wait till you're twenty-one. But most things we let you do at eighteen. Um, I think it was just felt like this was the kind of a decision that a seventeen-year-old could make on their own rationality.
Was, was this at sixteen and down? Is that what it was?
I can't, I thought it was, I thought we ended up at sixteen, but I'd have to double check to see. Um, but yes, it's, I, I'm quite sure it's not above eighteen.
Okay, I would, I would like to see it from twenty-one to sixteen on the next bill cause, um, there's a lot of T B I going on, traumatic brain injuries that bothers me a lot. And if everybody gets that helmet would be great. Also, um, I thank you for working with Jenna on this, uh, big time. Aloha.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Senator? Uh, Senator, I would ask you, what, what is the statute of bill concerning the neighborhood boards?
Oh, it passed.
I, I didn't, did the governor sign it?
Yeah, it's.
The last time.
It went into effect upon approval, so you don't have to be quite as careful about your, uh.
So next, next month, our agenda can be a little shorter, so.
Okay, and you still, you, you still, of course, have to, if you wanna make a decision on it, you still have to have it.
Right, right.
For just conversations between you and third-party government reporters, you were back to the status quo.
Thank you very much. Uh, Paula, did you wanna follow up?
Yeah, um, the only other question I had of the Senator is, since he's judici- judiciary, wow, almost can't say it. Um, does he have anything to do with, um, this, um, people in DOJ, like the judges, telling them what to do as far as getting this speeding under control in Hawaii? Cause if they're giving them citations and they're not following up and the judges are letting them go, what kind of thing would the legislature do? Help, help the community, cause speeding seems to be bringing, brought up more than once tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, so we do, the, the Senate does confirm judges to the state system. Uh, it's not called DOJ, it's just the judiciary. The DOJ is the Department of Justice at the federal level. Um, we did pass a bill, it wasn't mine, but, uh, Senator Elafont, they had a bill on repeat speeders are, are really high, you know, people who speed way above the speed limit, it did pass. We emphasize to every judge that comes through and, and they, and they, they understand that that's their job to enforce the law. And, um, you know, especially for repeat offenders, they'll throw the book at people if they feel it's necessary.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was thinking, I was thinking that if you, you gave enough citations with the, supporting a police department, the police department might have more money because over here, they're coming in the valley at fifty-seven and they're coming, no, not fifty-nine and also going Kailua-bound at fifty-seven. So I don't understand. Get them all, get them all cited and then get the money and then you can do some more money with your judiciary, I think.
Uh, my recollection is that this, this has been a bone of contention with the counties for a long time. But my recollection is that the money from the, anything that's adjudicated in a state court, the money just goes to the general fund. So it doesn't, it's not like a bounty system where they, if they catch more people, they get more money.
But that's still making money that might be able to eventually get down to the police department. So they can get their taser guns or whatever.
Some of the money that we, the, the state does give grants and aid or, uh, grants to counties for various purposes from time to time.
Well, so just let them speed and then just let it go. Bad, bad, bad. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ray?
Oh, Senator, I just wanted to thank you for that law that you just got implemented with the sentencing law. Thank you. I testified on it, on behalf of it, and I appreciate all your hard work as well as Jenna.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Hearing no more questions. Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you for showing, um, coming out this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Representative Jenna Takineuchi is, is a representative online.
Hi, Chair. Hi, everybody. I'm here. Um, just two quick, um, updates and these are both gonna be about, um, helping, um, kids who might need extra, um, you know, food assistance this summer. So now that school's out, um, you know, a lot of our families really rely on the school breakfast and lunch program in the public schools to make sure, um, kids are fed. So there's actually two programs running through summer, um, so for, so in case, um, you know, anybody or, um, any families that might, uh, wanna participate in this program. So the first is gonna be through some of our, um, Department of Education schools. There's actually sixty-eight public schools statewide that are offering, um, both breakfast and lunch to any kids. If you're, as long as you're eighteen and under, you can go and participate. You don't have to go to the school you're enrolled in. You don't have to even be in public school. If you know someone who is even in a private school, um, situation that, you know, but is facing kind of hunger issues, um, they're free to also participate in this program. You just need to be eight, the kids just need to be eighteen and younger. So it's already started. It started on June twelfth and it's gonna run all the way to, where's this start? Sorry. And it runs through the, um, summer program except for, um, July fourth, since that's a state holiday. Um, it's gonna be Monday through Friday. They serve breakfast from seven fifteen A M to eight forty-five A M and then lunch from ten thirty A M to twelve P M. Um, and, um, I'll put a link in the chat with a list of all the schools. Um, the closest schools to kind of our area are gonna be, um, My My Elementary School, uh, Roosevelt High School and Stevenson Middle School. But there are, um, sites statewide, so you know, if you know people, they can go to any site, um, that is close to them. And yeah, again, I'll put that in the chat for you. There's also a second, um, program being run through the food bank. This is the Food Bank Sun Meals Program. This is also free for any children of eighteen and under to enjoy a free lunch during the summer. Uh, we actually have, um, a location over at Laleha Public Library. Um, this is lunches that are gonna be, it's first come, first served and has to be eaten on the premises. But again, uh, no registration required, any kids under eighteen. Um, Laleha Library is gonna be doing this every Friday. They start at June sixth and it's gonna run until August first, uh, so every Friday until August first. Um, again, except for July fourth, which is a state holiday. Lunch is going to be served from twelve thirty to two thirty P M on those Fridays and the library, or the library itself is actually gonna also show a movie along with that. Um, so something the kids can, or families can do together, um, as the kids get the lunch. Um, I will put a link for that in the chat as well, if you wanna check it out. Um, there, there are other locations, but again, the closest one to us is gonna be at Laleha Public Library for that food bank, um, feeding program. Um, that's kind of all I, oh, actually, sorry, one more thing. Um, last year, I started, um, what I called, um, Park Talks. Um, this is when, you know, I just shared with neighbors that I was going to places, public places around the district and I just, you know, I just hung out for an hour and a half and if anyone wanted to come by, um, talk story, ask a question. They could, you know, they'd stay the whole time, talk with neighbors, you could just ask your question and go, um, no pressure for anything. But I'm starting up my Park Talk series again, um, for now to the end of the year. My first one is actually, I, since I started calling them Park Talks, I wanted to keep the name, but this one's actually at Laleha Public Library. Um, it's gonna be next week, Thursday, June twenty-sixth, um, from five to six thirty in the, um, library's meeting room. So if you're free, please feel free to stop by. Um, I actually have a link I'll also share. I, I'm just gonna start like a quick webpage, um, where I'm gonna list all these Park Talk events and other events that I'm gonna be hosting. I don't think, uh, cause mail is so expensive, I don't think I have enough to, you know, mail the entire district every single time. I'm kind of just targeting like, you know, areas close by. So for a lot of you, um, in Paola Valley, you know, when I go to Booth Park, I'm gonna try and like send a reminder to the valley. But on this webpage, I'm gonna list all the events and, you know, if you save the link, you're free to come to any of them, even if you don't get like the little postcard, um, open to everyone across the district, whatever works well for your schedule, what location works well for your schedule. But, um, again, we'll share that in the chat. And if you're free next Thursday, um, feel free to come by the library. And, um, any questions, I'm happy to take that back.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, uh, for the representative? I don't see any, so, uh, thank you, Jenna. Thank you very much and, oh, oh, Paula. Paula, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, Representative, I think I misclued myself on who to talk to, but I know you know about Pelikani.
Yes.
The sidewalk. And I know I talked to Kim tonight, because, because it's in the city and county, but I wanted to know if, if you could get it on the CIP budget, please.
Yeah, I think it'd still be a city project, but I also have an open request in with the city to both look at installing a sidewalk along there and also to address the speeding that people have been flagging to my office.
Right. The other part of it is walking down the middle of the street is going to school. That, trying to clear it with DOJ as to being in a school zone, because Alika is a school zone. And so I don't want any kids killed over there. That's what I'm worried about. Or seniors, or anyone walking dogs, or anything.
Yeah. No, we definitely want everyone to be able to walk through their own neighborhood safely.
So I, if I miscue you to talk to Kim, I, you know, if everybody works together, I guess I could get something done for a CIP budget. I know.
Yeah, and, yeah, happy to, you know, always make the multiple reports, you know, sometimes squeaky wheel kind of thing. Hopefully, we don't want to resort to that, but I'm always happy to.
But you did good with us. Thank you.
And I do have one open with the city, kind of left over from a while ago. I'll have Hilton take a look at, maybe ask DTS what's going on with the status of that evaluation.
Do you know anything about what's going on with the school signs? About the, you know, putting up pedestrians for going school zones down on parks?
Oh, that's right. Sorry, no, I don't think we got an update about that, but I'll have Hilton in the department on that request we have for that too. Sorry about that, that's right.
Just to let you know that when they started on Pa'oua, the traffic, according to Mr. Ned, that the school is worried about the traffic and kids crossing the street, et cetera, both at the top and the bottom, upper Dalsette, Dalsette and down at Pa'oua. So, you know, if kids coming to school and they've got so much traffic, it's gonna be scary. And also for the, for the parents, but I don't know if parents are the ones speeding in the area too, probably, but people gotta start taking their foot on the lid off the pedal, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it's more, everyone just needs to remember, I know everyone's in a rush now, but you know, when you're, especially when you're by a school, when you're in a residential, to just kind of really slow down and be aware of your surroundings. Yeah.
You're going down my street.
I don't know how we do the speeding without just people being more mindful themselves, hopefully.
Okay. Paula, I'm sorry, we, we talked about that. Maybe you could reach out to the representative separately if you want.
I just want to explain why I did it the way I did it backwards.
No worries. Thank you very much.
No, I worry.
No, I meant no worries for the conversation, never mind. Anyway, thank you very, very much, Jenna. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Do we have any other affected federally elected officials or any other elected officials that are here tonight at which to report? Hearing none, we can move on to our board business. And our first item is, and we've talked about this, I know in the past, but we actually have a formal resolution and more specifics. And that is, we have someone from Neighborhood Board Ten, which is Makiki, to talk about her concern about the Punch Bowl Corps and expanding perhaps Neighborhood, our board to include that. So I'll let Claire Santos. Claire?
Yes, I am here. I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So if you'd like to discuss your proposal?
Aloha and, aloha and thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members and community members. Has the resolution been distributed so you folks are already knowledgeable about it? Yes, thank you. Okay, I, I see a head nodding there. I am actually here not representing Neighborhood Board Ten. I am here for my community. And we did meet tonight and still agree. We are part of Punch Bowl. I live on the corner of, the Malka Corner, the Punch Bowl side of the, at the intersection of Prospect, Ala Paei and Iolani. And, let's see. I purchased my condo in nineteen ninety-three with the understanding I live in the special district for Punch Bowl, and that it was subject to all kinds of certain rules and protections as a special district. The map lines of the special district are guided by Prospect Street, Nejoa Street, and Alva Ilimo. Alva Ilimo, pardon me, Adrian. Alva Ilimo Streets. It is a very clear definition. Myself and my entire community have always considered ourselves part of Punch Bowl. We are, I mean, the outer slopes of Punch Bowl are literally right behind me. I could climb up the mountain. Somewhere in the world, a dividing line was made to take apart a small piece of Punch Bowl to Oahuina, and put it in this Makiki Neighborhood Board. I'm laughing because it's just completely absurd to all of us. This is an historic Hawaiian place where there are Evi Kukuna, there are, you know, this is a hill of sacrifice, a battleground, there are sacred rituals that have occurred here. This is native Hawaiian land, for all intents and purposes. How do you decide to cut a piece off of it and, you know, kick us out and put us somewhere else? We don't know when it happened, but we don't want it to happen. We identify as Punch Bowl. There's no such thing in the world as lower Punch Bowl. Chair Smith, does your, can your person put up that little map with my? Okay. I just wanted to define for you how small this section is. When they redrew lines, they cut through the mountain, which I hope didn't cut through any graves, but they kind of put you folks behind us and left us hanging out there on, along that whole green section. And please excuse me, I did that with my index finger on my iPhone to color that in, so it looks like the fifth grade kindergartner did it. That is our little section that used to belong to Punch Bowl that somebody carved out. We want to come back. So I am here to respectfully, humbly ask you to roll out your welcome mat. Show your aloha. Bring us back into your Papakolea section, because that area down by Stevenson School and such, OHA and Papakolea are working on how to develop that. Reunite us with Punch Bowl. We don't know when or how we were kicked out. I do have Deputy Witzel investigating how this even happened. But the special, what I'm asking is for the special district guidelines to be followed. And that is, takes us to Prospect Street. We don't have to take the whole nut of, you know, toward Avenue and down to Magellan. Just reinstate, that is known as the Punch Bowl Corps, and we want that reinstated. And I want you to understand with this resolution, it doesn't decide that you bring it back in. What this does is open the door for the Neighborhood Commission to hold public hearings. There need to be two public hearings. For people, for the communities to decide if this should come back in. For those of us who live here, we always, we didn't know we were kicked out. We don't know when it happened, and we want to be formally reinstated. When, when Chair Smith asked if anyone from Punch Bowl wants to be on this board, I was going to raise my hand, because I literally live on Punch Bowl. So I really respectfully, humbly ask that you folks pass this resolution so that the Neighborhood Commission can begin a process of opening the door to the community for their input about reinstating this small section, it's a very small section, reinstating it back to Neighborhood Board Eighteen. We do not identify with Neighborhood, Neighborhood Board Twelve, please pardon me. We do not identify with Neighborhood Board Ten. They have virtually ignored us until that fatal accident at the five-way intersection where Mr. Elmer Milikini of Papakolea was killed. And that is because I brought the Neighborhood Board in, and when I called the city to ask what Neighborhood Board is mine, they said you're in Twelve, and I wrote Chair Smith a long letter about that intersection, and he had to send me to Neighborhood Board Ten. We never knew we were kicked out. So please open that door. This, this is not a commitment to move the line. This is, this is what Neighborhood Boards do. We connect the communities with the right government people, and by passing this resolution, you opened that door for this community to be connected to the government officials to examine the change and have the community input. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and thank you, Chair, for allowing me to present tonight.
Certainly. Do we have any questions?
Mike Long, Sylvia Young.
Okay, Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Just to add to the presentation, that area of Punch Bowl is in the same representative, state representative and state senate district as basically the rest of our Punch Bowl district. However, the Punch Bowl district is split between Senator Fukunaga and Senator Rhodes' district. But state senate, state representative are all the same for the rest of Punch Bowl. So, as well as city council. So it's just some sort of weird provision with the Neighborhood Board only that has separated this section from the rest of Punch Bowl. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Okay. For one thing, that area was never part of Neighborhood Board Twelve when the Neighborhood Boards were formed back in nineteen seventy-three. The Neighborhood Boards' boundaries are by the federal census tract. That's how the Neighborhood Boards were set up. We are separated by the federal census tract. And that's why the districts got split up, because the other issue is Papakolea. We have the top of Papakolea and part of Papakolea in the, what they call the Kiwalo District. But right adjacent to the Kiwalo District, there's the Kalawahini subdivision that came on later, and there's a bridge to connect them to their access on Awailemo Street. So they wanted to be part of Twelve also, but they're part of Ten because of the census tract. So it's, it's more complicated than just doing this resolution. We've got to realign it, and it's not just doing it by that one section. We would probably have to ask to include that whole census tract to be part of our district.
I'm sorry, may I, may I, Chair?
Go ahead.
May I respond? With all due respect, Ms. Sylvia, I have been assured by the Neighborhood Commission and the Neighborhood Charter that they do have the authority to change the lines. So.
Yes.
They have that authority, and what we're doing here is to ask for that community door opening, for the community to have input. You know, the, the door is open that we can change the lines regardless of the census tract. What we're asking here is that we open the door for the community to have their input, for the community to say whether they want to be part of it or not. So, you know, I'm, I'm here totally out of respect for you folks as a courtesy to see if they're, you know, you'll roll out the red carpet. But, you know, Senator Fukunaga is involved, and she's introducing me to Winston Welch of Outdoor Circle, Donna Wong of Hawaii's Thousands Friends, and OHA, so that we have consensus and, you know, collaboration among many groups and people to achieve this.
I'm not in opposition. Oh, sorry. I'm not in opposition, okay?
Thank you.
It's just that, is the area that she's asking to have us consolidate into Neighborhood Twelve, is that the whole census tract for that area? So we could have defined lines?
The, the census tract, I think, is no longer the governing document. That's what I, I thought I had explained that, that it can be changed, and the lines can be redrawn by the Neighborhood Commission and the charter. So it's not about the census tract anymore, according to what they have told me.
So.
But, so it requires a charter change, because the Neighborhood Boards were set up by a city charter. So it requires.
Wait, let me, let me chime in here, please.
Doesn't it require a charter change?
Thank you, Chair.
So in the plan itself, it allows, it allows for a change. Yeah, you don't, there's nothing in the charter about the lines, other than the fact that the neighborhood, there will be geographical units set up, but there, it can be changed. I think there are two ways, and gosh, I'm sorry, I should have looked at it. I think there's a petition way.
Petition way and, and the resolution way, and the third way is for the neighborhood, and I pardon my breach of Robert's rules, I apologize. There are three ways. Petition, resolution, and the Neighborhood Commission can initiate it on its own. The Neighborhood Commission asked us for a resolution, so here I am.
Yeah, so I, I will say honestly, the neighborhood, the commission is looking at the neighborhood plan anyway, but it's gonna be probably years before we get to the geographical boundaries aspect of it. So, yeah, this would be the, I, I think the best, the best way to go forward is to pass a resolution expressing our desires. So are there any, any further discussion?
Only for me to say I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Well, I, I will say, can you put up that, the other picture? If, if I could point this out real quick, and we're looking for the other drawing. Sorry, not that one.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, just one second. It's without the green. And, I'm sorry, this is not a great drawing, because I actually did this myself, but if you can see, the core, the Punch Bowl Corps would essentially go along the street of Prospect Street. But I have to say, in my opinion, the folks that set up the Neighborhood Boards actually did the right thing, because they kept all those people together. If you want to change things, I just don't think it's probably a good idea to have one person on one side of the street being in one Neighborhood Board, and someone on the other side of the street being in the other Neighborhood Board. So it seems like if we wanted to change this, we would, we would have to take, take a little bit more of the, the area. But that's just my opinion. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts. So I guess what I would ask at this point, is there a motion? I would, before we get there, let me add one more other comment, and that is, part of this resolution does discuss adding seats and deleting seats. And I, I think that's outside the scope of the resolution. I think that should be a totally separate decision. And I don't know if Claire, if you, if you would remove it on my request, but we can vote on it if, if not.
I, I could, I'm happy to remove it. I put the word "could." I didn't say "would." I said "could" involve that, just as a heads up.
Okay, well, thank you.
And if it's desirable to you folks. I, the, the resolution is subject to your amendments, I'll be happy to make them. But I did, I was careful to use the word "could."
Thank you. No, I would, I would request that that be stricken, if that's okay, that whole number eleven.
Okay.
Sylvia, thank you. So let me just read it out, the, the substantial parts. I'll read about the distribution. Be it resolved that the most efficient and effective representation of the Punch Bowl Corps by the Neighborhood Board system would be to unify the Corps under one board, and be it further. and be it further resolved that Neighborhood Board Number Twelve is the most appropriate board for consolidation of service as Neighborhood Board Number Twelve already includes the majority of Punch Bowl itself as well as representatives of the Papa Kolea Native Hawaiian Homestead community in Sub District One. And, okay, well, the rest is just administrative. So that's basically the be it resolves that concern our board. Is there a motion to pass the resolution?
Well, I have hands up from Sylvia and Mike.
Okay, well, maybe, I don't know if, uh, okay, Mike? Mike, if you want to speak.
I had a question about if we offer this resolution to adopt this, basically, the people on the, on the Ma'aka side of Prospect. Does there have to be a corresponding resolution from the board that we're taking it from, that taking their membership from? You know, how does that work?
There does not, if I may, Chair.
Claire, Claire, let me, let me speak to that.
I apologize, I forgot about it.
No worries, no worries. So I've been speaking with the Chair of Number Ten. And I think Claire is prepared, she is a member of Number Ten, so she's prepared this Thursday to offer, I don't know, it'll probably be the exact same word, but it'll be basically the same wordage, uh, the same resolutions prepared for their board, um, which they would be the board that would give up that that area or that population. So it doesn't, it's not required. You know, the Commission on its own, I guess, could make a change. But I think um, the Commission would, I think, has been expressed as they really want both communities to agree. They don't want to impose this decision at this point on the community. So as a practical matter, it would require both resolutions, but not technically. Does that answer your question, Mike?
Um, so in the case that hypothetically we had, or hypothetically, we adopt this resolution and Makiki turns it down, where does that leave the residents? Or vice versa, we refuse the resolution, Makiki adapts it, leaving the those residents in no Neighborhood Board technically. So are, is that a possibility? Either of those a possibility?
Okay, just to be clear, the lines are set at the moment. Those folks are in Makiki's Neighborhood Board. So this is, this is starting, as Claire mentioned, this is starting the process of of amending the Neighborhood Plan, which include all the boundaries. So if if nothing, even if both boards do pass, it still has to go to the Commission and the Commission then make a decision whether to approve it. And then there are public hearings and the mayor would have to sign, sign it, have to be registered with Clerk. But but anyway, so that's sort of the process.
He can do it.
Oh, I think Sylvia, Sylvia. Well, I think, Adrian, I'll get to you in just a second, Sylvia. Well, since you already have a hand.
Um, Patrick, you know, I think it's premature for us to agree to any geographical changes to our Neighborhood District because the Neighborhood Commission is revising the Neighborhood Plan and the geographical areas. And we're not the only ones that have through the years found that it doesn't make sense for some, for us to cut off our across the street neighbor from participating in what our Neighborhood Boards do. See, and that's why I'm sort of hesitant about this um, resolution because looking at what her boundary line is, she, we're, and it's on Prospect Street. So if you're against the mountain side of Prospect Street, you're in Neighborhood Board Twelve. But then if you're across the street side, then you're out of our Neighborhood Board. So I think there's gotta be a little bit more logical um, boundary that defines it than what is shown in this resolution.
Thank you. Um, Claire, I'll look to respond in just a moment, but let me get to one of our other board members, Adrian. Please go ahead.
Okay, I, um, it's okay, Patrick, because I I'm still confused on the special district and where they are and and why it comes to twelve, so it's okay.
Okay. Well, let me, let me explain just really quickly. There is something called the Punch Bowl Special District.
No, I know that, but I thought that was only about, you know, when you do construction and different things in that area now. So I'm trying to understand what does Punch Bowl Special District have to do with nor- normal living? Because there's, there's nothing that, you know, I've experienced in Papa Kolea where Punch Bowl Special District has come up other than when you go to look at developing around Punch Bowl. It's about the development. And that Punch Bowl Special District Plan is from like two thousand. So the last meeting I went to where the plan came up, they said it's it's from two thousand and it needs to be updated and all of that. So it's kind of like, when you say it's Punch Bowl Special District, it's just the designation, but it really need means what? Because we've only been told, like, if you go to develop on the mountain, those are some rules that have to be followed. So that's where I I'm just trying to understand this green space area that's been highlighted and you know, she says she bought, you know, excuse me, Claire says she bought the the place and she's, her place is special district, but what does that really mean today? You know, because years ago, it meant something when they were developing. But now, because there really isn't much development, yeah, that's all I, my confusion. And I'm over here researching because I have the special district plan to kind of understand where does this align with Neighborhood Board other than if the community just feels they don't have good representation on on Neighborhood Board Number Ten?
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I guess I'll I'll let Claire address this.
All of the, all of the above, Chair, all of the above. I understand why there is confusion. If you look at the map lines, and I I gave you the um, map lines from the Neighborhood Commission on what the districts were, and they're pretty identical. You can't tell ten from twelve. I also gave you the uh QR code to this Punch Bowl Special District guidelines. Those guidelines were developed because of development, because Punch Bowl was being violated by developers. It was to stop that. And excuse me, I have to tell you, the developers have converged on this area of the special district and they want to build the tenement towers here. So part of protecting Punch Bowl is to abide by the special district guidelines, okay? Don't worry about dividing sides of a street. They they were divided by the special district. I really don't see if there's a psychological component to one side of the street or the other. The lines have to be somewhere, and that happens all over the place. We are relatable to Punch Bowl, we are geographically part of the Punch Bowl crater. My in-laws are all on the inside, which is, you know, OHA rules the whole thing. They are involved with everything. The VA runs the inside, the Army runs the outside. There's state involvement, there is city and county involvement. There is a lot of moving parts to maintaining Punch Bowl and the special district guidelines meant to consolidate all of this. And there are, there is a review board for anyone who wants to do anything there. So I can see where there's confusion because maps are confused, they show identical map lines. The special district guidelines puts everything on this side of Prospect Street. There's no psychic trauma to anyone if they live on the other side of the street. That's just where their area starts. And again, this is about starting a process that's gonna take a long time. The Neighborhood Commission can change things, the community can change things. This will evolve. This resolution simply opens the door and does what a Neighborhood Board is intended to do, which is to connect the community to the Neighborhood Commission and government to start a process. And we all know how these processes evolve over time. So we would like to get it started, and maybe not in my lifetime will it. I just reached a certain age, maybe in my lifetime it won't have come to fruition. But I am representing my community who asked me to come and present to you folks and and again, humbly and respectfully, ask for you to be the gatekeeper. And in response to Mr. Lum, the Commissioner Deputy asked me for a resolution. It does not have to come from both boards. I decided to, that I will present to both boards. And I came to you folks first out of respect as the receiving people. Would you be open? Do you have the aloha to welcome us back into the fold here? Because we feel cut out. So it doesn't have to be two resolutions passed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Reggie.
Um, I understand your requests, Claire. I just need to know why it does this matter? Other me, you know, other than feeling like you're not part of that boundary? I'm looking this way because my map is over here. You're not, you're cut out of this geographical area. Why does it matter? Is the other Neighborhood Board not giving you an opportunity to raise your issue and speak? And you feel that Neighborhood Board Twelve, I mean, I just want to know why, I'm just confused, I just need to know.
No, no.
Claire, Claire, hold on just a second now, let's, let's
Okay.
So, uh, please, in in a couple minutes, please, so not more than that. Can you respond?
Oh, okay, I, okay, thank you, Chair. There are multiple reasons. One is that the developers have discovered this area. Someone has declared this area part of the urban core development. And we do have an active group, including an attorney, who want that rescinded. Have we received, been well received by Neighborhood Board Ten? No, we have not, and I'm saying that with a full red face because I'm on Neighborhood Board Ten. It has taken months to get a resolution passed, um, and we had to bring in an attorney to speak. So uh, I'm I'm sorry to say that about my own board, but it has been a difficult process. We also didn't know, we just plain didn't know we weren't part of twelve. We consider ourselves part of Punch Bowl spiritually, you know, culturally. We didn't know someone had carved us out when they drew the lines. And we bumped back in, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's personal for all of us. We feel hurt in a way that we've been cut out and we didn't know about it. And as I said, I never knew we weren't in twelve until I wrote to Chair Smith about the car crash and found out we're in Makiki somehow, which we don't identify with at all.
Okay, thank, thank you, Claire.
Thank you, Chair.
Sylvia.
Um, I hear what um, Claire is saying, but like I've mentioned before, we are, that area was never part of Neighborhood Board Twelve to begin with, with the Neighborhood Plan. And our district really only went up to um, Pele Street, above the freeway, up to Prospect Street. So that, and then everything on the Diamond Head side of Pele Street belonged to Number Ten. But the thing is, through the years, by the way, the Punch Bowl Historic District is a Maryland-born horse, Councilwoman Maryland-born horses bill that got passed. And it was mainly to protect the view plains of the Punch Bowl because developers and other homeowners were trying to build towers on the slopes of Punch Bowl. And we were trying to protect the view plains from the city. When you look up the mountain to Punch Bowl, you would have the green Punch Bowl, sort of like Diamond Head, okay? So um, that's how it all began. And in the Punch Bowl District, in that special district, you also have restrictions as to what color you can paint your homes if you're in this special district. It had to be neutral um, colors.
Okay, Sylvia, Sylvia, can you, Sylvia, can you?
That was part of the history of this um, Punch Bowl District. But I think it, on my part, I actually would like to see more investigation as to whether this is only part of what we would like to see as part of Neighborhood Board Twelve. You know, I'm not in disagreement that I sure would love to have that area, but maybe it should go all the way down to Magellan Street and the freeway. Then we don't have to, we have a defined boundary. But I don't know, I don't
Okay.
We have a resident, Puny Keela Keela Oha.
Is it?
Ka'apun.
Puny Keela Oha.
There's a resident, uh,
My name is Puny Keela Oha.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, okay, um, my name is Puny Keela Oha, hi Claire. Aloha, everybody, hi Sylvia. Okay, so my name is Puny, I served in the Neighborhood Board over twenty years ago with Paula and Sylvia and everybody else. And um, at the time, I was the president of the Papa Kolea Community Association. So just a background, Papa Kolea was was placed into Neighborhood Board Number Twelve from the two thousand, I mean, it's been a long time. And how that occurred, I'm not sure. I don't think, I really, I don't think it had anything to do with tax map key. Uh, because Papa Kolea is in two tax map keys, I think three if you count Kalahe. So um, that didn't apply. So how it happened, really nobody knows. But what I do know is that, that's, and I wanted to ask Claire, when you're talking about this Punch Bowl Special District area and developers, what are you guys looking at developing? Or where?
Chair, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Uh, developer Paul Lamb, who was building um, microunit tenements, wants to put up a sixty-eight-foot tower on Ala'pa'i Street, right in the, right on the slope of Punch Bowl. We are fighting it tooth and nail. He is, it it's the abuse and misuse of Bill Seven, but that's beyond what we're talking about here. But the developers have discovered this area and they are trying to get in under Bill Seven to put up these high-rise microunit tenements with zero parking, fifty-three units, no parking. Yeah.
Right. So if I, if I remember correctly, that conversation came up a while ago and there's been great opposition to that tower.
Absolutely, yes, we are fighting.
Yeah, and they're standing on the, on the special district provisions that are currently in place for Pu'waina, for Punch Bowl. I only ask because the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, on the other side of a mountain facing Roosevelt and Stevenson, that's part of the district, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's under the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. The community has been given that property to develop. Okay, so right now, we are in the planning stages of that development in partnership with the National Cemetery of the Pacific. We are very well aware of the, of the background and the reason why Mayor Borners at the time established those provisions. And Papa Kolea was supportive, you know, and we are very mindful of the viewscape. Yeah, the kupuna in Papa Kolea agree. We agree that we need to be very mindful not to disregard or disrespect that, that very hollow ground at Punch Bowl. But the HHL has it. We are in the throw, in the, in the beginning But the HHL has it. We are in the throw, in the, in the beginning of planning to develop. Number one, a Kupuna supported meeting center on the Stevenson side. And an educational culture center on the Lincoln School side. So we are doing. As a community and we.
Ah, she cut out.
Uh, Puny, I, i- if you turn your video off, it might be easier because you're kind of breaking up. Well Claire, did you want to address anything she might have brought up?
Just as a point of fact is that, um, and I'm grateful that, you know, there are mystery lines being drawn that. We don't actually know when they changed and um. Puny's area that she's talking about, and I've been to their meetings, um, or one of their meetings at a town hall where they explained how they want. How they're thinking of developing that area. It actually puts them between two neighborhood boards. Their, their community center will be on the Lincoln School side, which is neighborhood board 12. And the uh, Kupuna Housing or whatever they're going to build on the Stevenson side is in neighborhood board 10. So they're split too. If, if this isn't redrawn. It's crazy to have to bounce back and forth and I'm the only person on neighborhood board 10 who actually lives up here. Everyone else lives down in Makiki, down the hill. Um, so with the loss of me from the neighborhood board because I did not choose to be uh, elected, um.
Um, well, let's not get involved in that, please. So Adrian, um, would you like to comment, please?
Well, I, I, I would because one of the things, you know, having this conversation. If the community, Claire is representing the community and it's the community's request. So really dealing with what the community is asking of the board should be what is at hand right now. The reasoning, if, you know, you don't have the representation and neighborhood board is a place where you should get the representation. You know, as we're talking about the history and all that other stuff, right now you have a community that feels they don't have a voice that they want. They're coming to this board and saying, can we, they're, you know, close enough to be in the district and can we. Get your support to try to do this. We don't even know what's going to happen. And I think the, back in nineteen, whenever. Not important right now because all of these rules keep changing and if you know they're, they're, they're fighting something that's going to happen and they need. You know, a, a voice where they can be heard. For me, that is what I would be looking at now that I understand more of kind of the why, you know, so. Not to include places that didn't ask to be included, but specifically if she has the support of the community. The community is wanting to do that. I think that's what we should be addressing. Either a yay or nay for the resolution or whatever she's asking of us, but not to. A lack of a bad word, bog her down with the historical things that, of things that we can't answer. You know, because Papukulea is, is in two, you know, and we've had this conversation as community. Do we try to come together as one or do we not? But we just said leave it alone because being represented by two for what we're going to try to do. Kind of works for us because to have people that can be on both and not to have to fight both. You know, from one spot makes sense. That's our reasoning right now. But totally understand if this is what community feels and where they feels they can get the best representation. To me, that's what the neighborhood is about. Community representation and voice so that, you know, they can be heard.
Thank you. Uh, so where are we at? Someone, uh, here are a couple of choices or a few choices, I guess. We can, um, someone can make a motion to approve the resolution as written. Uh, someone can, uh, we can say we want to investigate this more. In that we could actually write it up as it's supposed to appear in the plan. Or wait until Makiki makes a move. Just depends on the pleasure of the board. Is, is there um, is there some, does someone want to propose action?
Mike Lum.
Mike Lum, Mike.
I would like to propose that we accept the resolution as written. So I, I so move.
I see, Mike.
I will put, I will put in the provision that we did remove item 11. If that's okay. Is that all right with you, Mike and Adrian?
That is acceptable, yes.
So it will be as written with, with number 11 removed and that's just a discussion of the board than members of, the numbers of the members of the board. So there was a um, a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I hope everyone had an opportunity. We, we discussed what the be resolved is, but it's basically. To unify the core and put all that street to move the line essentially the slope. Of Punch Bowl to essentially the middle of Prospect Street. And that's, that's what the herb, the Punch Bowl Core is based upon the report. So. Is there any further discussion on that?
Uh, I see none.
Hearing, seeing none, we can move to a vote. Uh, so.
Or the cameras on.
Oh, cam, I'm sorry, cameras on if possible. I know some people have uh, tech problems, so. We will take, uh, why don't we do a voice vote real quick?
Oh, okay.
If that's okay, do you want me to do that?
Uh, or I could just do a quick rule call.
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
Okay, uh, Board Member Mason Iona is absent, so no. Uh, Board Member Adrian Dillard.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Board Member Joe Isley absent, uh, no. Uh, Board Member Reggie.
No.
Okay, no. Board Member Catherine Greby.
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Audrey Hedano.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Board Member Kamala is absent. Uh, Board Member Megan Kenny. Uh, I believe she may have, might have. Okay, no. Uh, Board Member Paula Kurishige.
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Mike Lum.
Yes.
Yes. Board, oh, uh, Board Member Philip Soon.
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Sylvia Young.
No.
No. Uh, Board Member, Chair Smith.
I have to say no, sorry. Yeah, I, I, it, it does not pass at this time. So, sorry. Um, Claire, I, you know, what I would suggest is take it to um, Neighborhood 10 Board and uh, see what they say and. Maybe we can move forward in the future. Thank you.
Again, I, I thank you for hearing me. I came to you folks for respect and first choice and. To open the door to a neighborhood board process with the commission to uh, allow the, the community a voice and. You voted no and I accept that. Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you Claire. Uh, so next on to our agenda, oh, sorry, I kind of lit my stack. Is the poisoning concerns for the water around Dallas and Aleka. Uh, and Paula can speak to that, I believe. Paula?
Yes, I can. Uh, we've got people who are poisoning their grass all up and down the street. Um, which is right next to the stream. And then also in the stream, there are fish and that water runs down all the way to through the park. So I want, I wanted to know that there are six rules in state and city and federal. That say no poisoning near a stream or in a stream. And there has been a, a thing in the Star Advertiser about people even cleaning their brushes. Paint brushes in the stream. So now I want everybody to know that with the six. Um, fresh water should be not messed with, that uh, they should be stopping to do that. But I need a support to, we can let the person know, persons, there's two of them. Know that what they're doing is um, against the federal state and in the laws.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you Paula. Uh, we can move on to the public concern for potential violations at New Wana Valley, uh, Valley Park and that's Paula also.
Um, that one was to be heard by, or spoken about by Mike Ellis who lives in the area and. I've, I've talked with him and he said he will graciously speak on all the items and I think there were several which we already brought up earlier.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, if you'd like to um, discuss that, please go ahead.
Okay, there's a, a, a list that I have here of some concerns that we have. Of course, security is the, the top priority. Of the park, especially at night. Uh. The big thing here is that the parking lot has overhead lights on the parking lot. But they haven't been working for a long time and I think if we could have someone just follow up with the um. Parks and Recreation Department and find out what are they going to do about the lights? Do they need to be replaced? Is it a wiring problem? Or whatever it is, but with lights in the parking lot, that discourages people that come out, you know, when the park closes, so. And it's a safety concern too, even for those that stay, uh, yes.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but um, when I talk with parks, the man that's taking care of the parks. He changed all the light bulbs in every place, but the electrician for the park, which would need to be sent by our neighborhood board. In, and why is the electrician taking eighteen months to fix the park?
Oh, Paula, Paula, the, the board, we, we don't have authority or budget to send in anybody, just so you know. Um, actually probably these concerns might have been better to ask of Tyler or the mayor's representative because.
Yeah.
Board, there's not really much.
Why just bring it up as a concern for as a neighbor, as a resident?
No, I just. Mr. Chair, I'm just telling you what the man said on what's going on eighteen months.
Okay, but I'm just saying that whoever said the board has to do it, doesn't realize the board is in no position.
No, I didn't mean, I didn't mean for anyone to say that or whatever came.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ellis.
Okay, another concern that we've got, that our problems are illegal smoking uh, throughout the park. Uh, especially at the restroom area. Um, that's where they smoke marijuana and it just smells terrible. Uh, to the neighboring uh, community. So if there was some enforcement on that or checking. Um, you know, it, it just requires the police to be there more often than they are. Uh, another item here is that um. Um, let's see, uh, oh, no, there we go. Hold on. Got them here. Um. Oh, the, the um, enforcement of park closure hours. Uh, it's, it's, the sign says ten PM to six AM or five AM, I'm not too sure. But if we could have someone use the. Chain gates or the chain that, that closes the park, but you have to lock it and then you have to unlock it in the morning. I think that could be done on the Parks and Recreation. They could have someone go out to the parks in the different areas. And take care of that at a, at a decent hour, you know, at ten o'clock and also at uh, in the morning when they come into work. They could be on a different shift, but that's, that's an enforcement that will help in the security of the park. Another recommendation is that we, on the New Wana Valley Park restrooms or bathroom areas. We need to perhaps uh, recommend that they put gates with locks on them so that when the park is closed, the gate locks, you know? And that will prevent people coming at weird hours and then deciding to stay and sleep and the whole bit. So these are just some things that uh, I thought would be uh, where we could, with more enforcement would be better. Control the security of the park, especially the parking, parking lot lights. They need to be on. And that is what I have. There's a, there's a whole list, but I'll just defer that for future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments or concerns about the report Mr. Ellis provided? Uh, hearing none, um, we can move on to the uh, seven broken signs to fix in Paola. Paula?
Uh, yes, I went around Paola um, that because I'm, I'm in a wheelchair condition. So I had someone drive me around, my daughter. I went to every street I could that was in the upper part Puu Waina, all the way up to Papukulea. And I turned in seven street signs, but I didn't get below um. Oh, that, where the store is on Awai, Awailimo and above also. So there's still a lot to do as far as even some of the street signs in Paola proper, as far as street signs, so. I turned in everything I could find and then as Kim said tonight. That they, they are looking into it. So anyone, which made me laugh because at the gas station which says Pacific Heights. Even that sign is missing. So uh, people going up that mountain. Better know where you're going because I know that's a street, steep mountain. So everybody look at the street signs and see because people are getting lost coming in to go to funerals. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, so when you said you reported them, you reported them to the city, I assume?
I reported them, yes, through the neighborhood board to the city, to Kim.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? So uh, hearing none, we can move on to a request for sidewalks and safety equipment on Heliakani. I, I, I assume that's. What you discussed a number of times, correct Paula?
Heliakani, yeah, yes. That one, that one is in a school zone also, so. Want to make sure because of speeding, that no kid is killed.
I think uh, the director of Sheriff said she would follow up on that, so I think we, okay.
Correct, yes.
We had the real rehabilitation of the Dalseth area for ADA purposes. Paula?
Yes, I talked to the Office of Aging. There's both the city aging and there's also the Executive Committee. For the Department of Health. I turned in seventeen pictures a few, couple of years back. But I don't know what they did in my pictures because that whole area in our area, because our people are all aging. And people are coming into our area just to use it, but this last week we had one person fall into Aleka. A fellow, fell, fell over the stream and another person, another walker, fell into the, into the bushes. Uh, because her walker got caught in one of the cracks. There are no um. Elevations for the wheelchair to go from the sidewalk onto the asphalt to cross the street. Uh, and there are things right in the middle of, of the streets. Not even to include the poly, which is really ADA bad, very bad. So.
Thank.
Everybody listen to this is, it needs to be up within the CIP budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Greby would like to come.
Uh, Kathy?
Hi, I just have a, a, it's a spelling error of Dalseth.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
Uh, Brandon, Brandon said he'll fix it. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, I will say, uh, at least on poly, if I recall correctly, we're going to have someone from maybe DOT. I think there was a request.
Yeah, for I O G, um, Director of Sheriff said DPP is investigating and so they will follow up.
Well, but were they planning to send a representative? Do you know?
Uh, I'm not sure. Currently, they just said they need more time to investigate.
Okay.
Yeah, but they are, it is, it is being currently addressed.
Okay, well, I, I, yeah, I was actually going to refer to the ADA issues on poly, so.
Oh.
Um, okay, so without any, anything further on that, we, we did.
Chair.
Yes, please, go ahead.
The ADA, the ADA should be included, which should be included in New Wana, um. The Dalseth Circle and anything going on down to the park because we got two people that fell down the last two, three weeks. And I want to make sure that, that people start looking at what's going on. And I want to make sure that, that people start looking at what's going on. Water hydrants in the middle of the sidewalk, telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk and the person in the wheelchair has to go in the poly highway to get around. And then you got the Dalseth Circle that's having the same kind of problems. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So without anything further, we can move on to, we, we did discuss the possible unlawful Airbnb at twenty on sixty poly and the resulting parking issues. Does anyone wish to add anything further to that?
I would.
Yes, go ahead, Paula.
There are not only one apartment on one floor, it has an attic. It also has a garage, which you're talking about. And at, on the side, if you're looking at it from the front, on the left side, there's also a tunnel that goes down into the ground and there's another apartment in there.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No, because I used to take care of the house.
Thank you. So moving on to poly highway pedestrian safety concerns, is, is there anything anyone wishes to add further to our discussion this evening?
I would like to say that, I'm talking to the people at the end of Wood Street who are having noise problems. Right at the top of wood, all the sticks that are stuck in the ground for the poly are broken off because people don't care. They just hit them and keep on going. Some of the sticks are still there, half of them, and it's a very dangerous situation. Also, they, now they've put more noise on the other side. So the air is getting louder and louder with no, no feedback from DOT. Anybody wishing to have the sticks replaced can call DOT and tell them their sticks are all missing because people are knocking them off with their car. We also have one witness that saw the sign that is out on the street, but right by Wood Street, and the bus hit the sign and kept on going. So it's a very dangerous corner. Thank you.
Thank you. But are there any further comments or concerns? Okay, hearing none. This next one is interesting in the sense that there is a request for a physical meeting location in our actual board district for our board. When we talked about this last year, I recall most of the board members did not seem particularly interested in meeting in person. So I would ask the board members here presently that are going to continue for the next term, if they would be interested in doing so, in meeting in person, like if we were able to go back to Pa'oa Elementary. Okay, well, let me ask it this way. Who would come in person or wants to come in person?
I would.
Okay, so then we have one and two, I come down here. So, I mean, essentially.
Mr. Chair, I don't understand why we have to pay. Went at the, right at the Pa'oa Gymnasium Swimming Pool. There is a place where we used to meet, but the chairs are eaten with termites and the tables. But there's no reason why we can't meet there. And there's parking around the park.
Well.
Versus going to the school because we're going to have to pay sixty dollars an hour. So everybody knows, sixty dollars an hour for the school, so.
Well, before we talk about where, let's just see if there's an interest in actually meeting in the district from our board members. Sylvia, go ahead, please.
Well, Patrick? I think it's wonderful if we could go back to Pa'oa School because of the accessibility for the disability, the accessibility to the fire station, the fire trucks and the police and the general community that need to drive and park at the school. Because Booth Park actually has the Laola Booth Room in the pavilion, the, the, the Laola Booth Ross multipurpose building has a room there that we used to meet. Problem is, the parking is basically only street parking. And if you go there in the night, you try to get a street parking. That's going to be the biggest concern. And so I would sort of rule out Booth Park. And then the other thing is, we have a lot of seniors in this district who I occasionally bump into that used to come to the meetings, said they would come back to the meetings if it was in person. But I think I honestly like this hybrid where you could be in the meeting personally or you could go online. Because for some of us who want to participate, who are now disabled and can't drive, I think it's, allows the disability people, the disabled members of our community to participate. But that's my opinion. And if you, if we can, in the next term, the next two years, even if we had to pay, and we were paying Pa'oa Elementary School, but it wasn't sixty dollars an hour. They were charging us like sixty dollars for the whole night to, for the custodian to help clean. And the only reason they did that is because you have people like me in the community on this board that used to participate a great deal in the activities at Pa'oa School. I did a lot of donations and time for volunteering at the school. So that's why the principal gave us that space for fifty dollars a month for each time that we had to meet. So this is, that is the thing. So I'm not quibbling about having to pay sixty dollars an hour.
Yeah, but Sylvia, Sylvia, hold on just a second. We're not talking about the money at the moment. The Dencio can pay the money and I, I can work with them. It's more about do, do the board members want to meet in person? That's the question. You know, will this, you know, is it worthwhile for us to establish a meeting facility or a meeting place in the community? Is what I'm asking.
Well, I think it's a question for the incoming board, not this board who's the outgoing. This is our last meeting. So July starts a new term for the ones that were elected.
Reggie.
Okay, well, let me, uh, let me just get to Reggie real quick and, and for her comments. She's been waiting, so.
Well, thank you, thank you. I agree with Sylvia about letting the new board decide on this issue. Personally, I really enjoy doing this from home, not because, well, it's a personal thing, right? So I really enjoy doing that, especially since I get up at four every morning and whatever moments I can save not traveling to a site, it's great for me. I know it's hard for those that don't have good internet access, but it does help me a lot. So it could even like involve my membership if, if we do change and we have to go strictly in person. It might be really hard for you, especially if the meetings go this long as it gets closer to ten. But that's just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, so why, you know, unless there's any objection, why don't we hold the, hold on to this till next month? But we have a new board and it can be part of the organizing decisions that we make. There are a number of things that we decide each year or each new term. So we'll do that without objection. So hearing none, we can move on to the amendments of May twentieth. Does anyone wish to offer any amendments?
See, oh, Kathy.
Patrick, I have a couple of things on the minutes.
Hold on, Sylvia, Kathy, Kathy, did you have something?
Mine again is just a grammatical correction under board business. Board business, talking about the, the dog park. It's under resident Isabel Allen. That's, it, it continues. And then in there, there's a sentence. She argues that there is strong community interest and that her and twenty of her friends must, must travel to the Windward Site. The, I, I think the correct grammar should be that she and her and twenty of her friends.
Oh, okay, I can hear, I mean, I don't think that.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, that, that'll be. All right, Sylvia. Sylvia, did you wish to offer anything?
Yeah, she's muted, but you can tell they're unmuted.
Uh, you're muted, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Under call to order. Board members present. Okay, this is minor. How come the list says Secretary Mike Lum, Treasurer, where was that? Treasurer Kaapu, Kaapuni Kama and Chairman Patrick Smith. But under Regia G, it doesn't say Vice Chair.
Oversaid, I could have.
Oh, that's an oversight.
That's a minor thing, but I just thought that I should point that out. Okay?
So noted, that's the first time I've seen that either. Must be just, I think maybe our.
If you're going to give everybody title on the executive committee, give everybody, not just three out of the four. Okay.
Right.
Then, under page three or four, District Three, Senator Carl Rhodes, who is Senator Baker's office? Who's Senator Baker?
I, I think that's a typo.
Oh, no, uh, some, somebody, that, that's what was recorded last meeting. The, the Senator.
Oh, it is a she.
Senator, we don't have a Senator Baker in our state legislature.
She used to be with Maui.
She was in Maui, but that's Rosalynn Baker and she's no longer a senator.
Right, correct.
Thanks, Glen Young recorded last night.
Um.
So I, I don't know.
Why don't we hold off then and we're investigating.
I don't know if she introduced this bill in this session.
Okay, hold, hold on just a second. I said, why don't we hold off because we're not sure and we're seeing what the actual amendment is.
And because it also says that in, under Jenna Taki Noochi's report to District Twenty, Senator Baker's skateboarding homeless bill passed.
Okay, so we're investigating that and find out why that was in there and.
That is what the two representatives.
And then, under board business.
Sorry, NA said.
That's my two, the two question on Senator Baker. Okay, and the other one is board business, the second bullet point, member Sylvia Young. I think the very last word should be parked nearby Lusitana and Pacific, but you got to add the word Heights Road.
Heights, yeah, certainly Heights Road.
Right.
Okay, is that it?
Okay. That's, that was it. That's my corrections.
Thank you. I'm going to do so. So according to our NA, this was the report that he received. Both when Glen Young sent, Glen Young from Carl Rhodes's office, he sent this. This is, so maybe the mistake was at, from Carl Rhodes and Representative Jenna. I don't know, but that, that's what was reported during the meeting.
And you can watch the YouTube. I, I believe their names were dropped.
Yeah, so there must have been a, the people making the reports maybe were mistaken or maybe we follow up with them, but that apparently was what happened. So anyway, are there any other corrections? Hearing none, since we have amendments.
Or just, so far, just minor.
So right, so so far, it was just the amendment to add the Pacific Heights Road correction and one minor.
Uh, changing she to, or her to she and then just adding Reggie's Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. So other than that, are there any objections to adopting amendments? So they will be adopted as amended? Thank you. So next on our agenda, before we have our announcements, I just wanted, and I didn't mean to actually, I think I wrote this as a note to myself. I didn't mean to include this. It's just, I did want to say thank you for everybody who served. We do have a few people that are not coming back. It's going to be Adrian Kaapuni and Megan. And I will tell them that I hope that we get input about the Papakalea community going forward because that's obviously our Hawaiian homelands are very important to everybody, our state, you know, our city and certainly our neighborhood board. And I want to thank them for their service. And I hope that in the future, they will consider serving once again. And furthermore, I would, I would hope because of their leadership status that they might encourage people from their community, other folks from their community, to serve on this board. So I want to thank everybody. It's been, I think, a good term, a very good term. And thank you for all, everyone's service. So thanks. With that said, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that both Kaapuni and Megan's seats are open. There are three open seats starting next month in, on, in Punchbowl. So please just come back and join us. You'll be welcome.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's actually Adrian who has the Punchbowl seat. Adrian Kaapuni, Megan, I believe it was in, yeah, just, just to let you know. But, but you're right with the sentiment. We do need, it's nice to have the spots filled, but it's, it's, it would be great to have people from Papakalea or at least some representation from that community so we can have, you know, contact and hear from the people. So, but I did want to say thank you to everybody for your service.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Kathy?
Kathy?
Okay.
Kathy and then Reggie.
Kathy, did you want to say something?
Ray was first.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Ray then.
Okay.
Um, Chair Smith, we want to thank you as well for chairing the neighborhood board meetings. You did a great job and hope that you continue. Thank you.
I echoed that.
I, I echo, I echo that too. Yeah, thank you, Patrick. Really good job.
Yes.
My question is that if we are not able to go in person for the swearing in next Saturday, did, did they have an online option?
My understanding is in the past, and, and you may be able to add it, is my understanding in the past at the beginning of the meeting, we would take a couple of minutes and our NA would swear everybody who wasn't able to attend at the meeting. And it just strikes me, I recall that I think every term we're supposed to do our Sunshine Law Training. So that may be, that may come up. I, I can't remember the deadlines, but that might be something that you hear about too. So, but yeah, if you, if you can't make the swearing in, there, there's going to be a way. So, thank you. And yeah, if you know of anybody else who might be interested from our open seats, please encourage them to serve their community.
Okay, I, Kathy wants to.
Oh, and Kathy, I'm sorry. That was Kathy. Sylvia, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm not able to make it on the twenty first either because I don't have a driver to take me out there. So I didn't sign up and, because it said that parking was going to be really bad. So I'm, you know, it's. it's, it's not a good time for me, especially this whole week. I've had, I had to go to emergency because I had a bad case of vertigo. So I'm not going anywhere for the time being. And then, um, but, but we'll get sworn in on the fifteenth, right? Before our meeting starts.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just remember to log on early. Okay, thank you.
Uh, well, we're gonna do, we'll do that at the beginning, so if, it, it probably would be better people move, well, we're gonna have to wait till everyone shows up, so we'll probably do it very quickly at seven o'clock, quite honestly. But if everybody is here a few minutes early, then, uh, or everybody who needs to be sworn in, we can do it a few minutes early, but it'll, it'll come as it is. And just to let everybody know, I'll be at the swearing in. As every, uh, people should know, I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Commission. Um, and so I'll be at the swearing in to hopefully, to represent our board for whatever it's worth. I don't know if anybody else is coming, but, yeah, the parking is supposedly really bad, so that's just one of the bad things. What can we do? Okay, well, let's, let's move on to announcements. Uh, our next regular meeting, as, as Sylvia mentioned, was, is July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That is the start of our next term. Uh, there is a note on here about the Department, our D, uh, Department of Transportation Services having a report. I believe that, if I recall correctly, that was regarding bus lines and everything like that, but I'm not really sure. I think I reported on that in the previous month. That may, this may be just the result from March to, yeah. I'm not sure if I put that on there or not. And then lastly, the City, uh, Climate Action Plan Committee works on. You know, I think these were holdovers from last month. I apologize. I didn't remove them from the draft. That was my, my mistake, so, so much for the Chair doing a great job, so. But anyway, are there any other announcements before we, uh, conclude our meeting?
Uh, seeing none.
Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening and, uh, a great rest of the month, and we'll see everybody next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pa'oa.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you, sir.